Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 26, 2022 meeting of the Leewood Planning Commission. The commission will come to order and the clerk will call the roll, please.
Commissioner McGurran.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Block.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Hunter.
Absent.
Commissioner Belzer.
Here.
Commissioner Hoyt.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Elkins.
Present. And Art, I'm not sure that you're, I think you may have been muted there, but we did see, we see that you're on the phone. So the commission, then the chairman finds that a quorum is present and will move forward to the business of the evening. Does staff have any revisions to the agenda that was presented to the commission?
We do not.
If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coleman.
I move approval of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Block. All those in favor of approving the agenda as it was submitted by staff, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the agenda is unanimously approved. I believe that we have two sets of minutes to review this evening. The first is from the March 22, 2022, meeting of the commission. And there was a draft set of minutes that was presented to us. Are there any revisions or corrections to those minutes as they were presented? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coleman.
I move approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes for March 22, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Block. All those in favor of approving, pardon me, the March 22, 2022 Planning Commission meeting minutes as they were presented by staff, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the March 22, 2022 minutes are approved unanimously. Takes us to the April 12, 2022, planning meeting. Are there any revisions or corrections to the minutes from that planning work session?
Mr. Chairman.
And Commissioner Coleman.
On page two, the first line, it should read Commissioner Block instead of Commissioner
Other changes or corrections?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hoyt.
Page 13, the very first line, it just should, at the very end of that sentence, it should read when you can honestly. So between when and can should be the word you.
Thank you. Any other changes?
Chairman.
Commissioner Block.
On page five, the first section where I spoke, on the second sentence, even if someone were not making, I believe is how it should be, not were still. And then I actually going back further, the sentence before that, I apologize, I missed it. Is that within three years of the wastewater line being put in? Adding three years of? And then...
And I'm sorry, what was the first one again?
So then in the, so the first one should have been, is that within three years of? So adding three years of in the second sentence. And then the second would be even if someone were not making instead of were still.
All right. And I believe you have one more.
One more. And I might have said this, but on the second to last, where it starts, this is again me, there is a development that hugs 151st. I think I might have said Sunrise Point, but actually I meant Prairie Star. I believe that's all I have. Thanks.
Any others? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes as revised?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coleman.
I move to approve the Planning Commission work session minutes for April 12, 2022 as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Block. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the minutes of the April 12, 2022 work session are approved as revised. I note that the following cases have been continued to May 23, 2022. That's case number 25-22, 8900 State Line Road, Johnson County Wastewater Pump Station, PS number 10/11. Case number 2622, 10346 State Line Road, Johnson County Wastewater Pump Station, PS number 13/13A. And case number 2722, 11200 Overbrook Road, Johnson County Wastewater Pump Station, PS number 14/16. Again, all three of those cases are continued to the May 23, 2022 meeting. I believe there's only one case on the consent agenda this evening. That's case number 3822, Ranchmark North, NBKC Bank Patio Furniture. Does anyone on the commission wish to hear from the applicant with respect to case number 3822 or have comments that would warrant pulling them from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to recommend the consent agenda to the governing body for approval?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coleman.
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Block. All those in favor of recommending the case on the consent agenda to the governing body for approval, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and on unanimous vote, the consent agenda is recommended to the governing body for approval. That brings us to the new business of the evening and will begin by calling case number 41-22, Leewood City Park, Leewood Bike Walk Hub signage requests for approval of a final plan located south of I-435 and east of Lee Boulevard. Ms. Geist, the staff wish to make a presentation?
We do.
Please proceed.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, this is case 41-22, Leewood Bike Walk Hub signage, request for approval of a final plan for two wall signs. This project is regarding proposed wall signage for the Leewood Bike Walk Hub located south of I-435 and east of Lee Boulevard. This location does not have development sign criteria, which is why this application is in front of you today. The applicant is proposing two wall signs to be mounted to the stone-clad knee walls located at the main entrance of the bike hub near the Leewood Aquatic Center. The proposed signs are to be pin-mounted channel letter wall signs. One will read bike on one side of the knee wall and the other will say walk. These will be constructed of one-inch-thick flat-cut aluminum of an iron ore finish. The signs themselves are approximately 10 inches tall and will be halo illuminated. Other signage onsite includes the previously approved signage for the new Leewood Aquatic Center buildings. This final plan meets the regulations of the Leewood Development Ordinance and staff recommends approval of case 41-22 with the stipulations listed in the staff report and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Geist. Are there questions for Ms. Geist? If not, welcome Ms. Claxton. If you care to come forward and comment on where we are with respect to the Bike Walk Hub.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So the bike hub itself has been, the frame has been erected. These signs are not yet under production pending your approval. And I think the application pretty much speaks for itself. There were two, since the one sign was longer than the other, that's why there were two, two submittals. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer that.
Thank you. And does the city have, or the park department have any concerns about any of the four stipulations that are attached?
No. No.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Claxton. Commissioner Block.
Ms. Claxton, I just didn't know if I fully understood just what the signs, is it walk to one direction and bike the other? Or is it, I guess I didn't understand.
No, it's just identifying the space as bike-walk. There are tables there, of course. There are restrooms adjacent to it. And originally it was just going to be called Bike Hub, but several members of the council and the park board felt like since there's more activity going on in that space than just biking, that it would be appropriate to add walk. So it's just identifying that you can, you can do a lot of things. There's places to sit and a mister and different amenities there.
I guess there's one other. I mean, do you have any concerns? You know, I think typically the city just does monument things where they're lit from the ground. You know, and this is going to have some light within it and it looks like it's close to the path. I mean, you know, people sitting on this wall. I mean, do you think it, opportunity for that to be damaged?
I don't believe so. So there's a two-inch cap that comes out and that's why the letters are one inch. So they're going to be underneath that cap. So that cap's going to help protect that. I, I can't say that people wouldn't sit on the wall, but there's going to be other seating opportunities in that space that I think people would choose.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Coleman.
Hey, Chris. Thanks, thanks for coming before us. So just on one wall, well, here's my thing, the whole, when you refer to it in the, in the case, it talks about the Bike Walk Hub. Was there any discussion of maybe just putting a sign up that says Bike Walk Hub instead of just bike on one side and walk on the other? Because when, when I first looked at this, I'm like, I guess I didn't understand the purpose of one side bike, one side walk, because the whole thing would be self-explanatory to me, but...
There was minimal discussion about that. I felt, we felt like staff and then talking with the architects that some people may not know what hub means. So it sounds strange, I know. But there's also signage in there. So you've got the two signs that show, and those were approved in the preliminary plan, the south loop, the north loop. So that's going to be not on the, let's see which page it's on. I don't know if it was shown on the original plan, but I don't know that that's in here, Catherine, but you can't see it in this particular, well, yes, you can. On this page, you can see back in the back, the signage.
What page is that?
Supplemental images.
The one you're looking at.
This one?
Yeah. Underneath the rag there with that.
So the, it doesn't matter, the bike side and the walk side has absolutely no reference to anything?
It has no reference to anything, any directive to go one side or the other.
Okay. I don't know if it's necessary. Personally, I don't think it's necessary to put a sign that says bike and walk, but you're, I'll defer to the expertise of that Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Well, it's also the, the coloring of the signage is going to match some of the other amenities that are going on at the current building as well. So keeping that colorization consistent throughout the project, those being next to each other, so.
Other questions? Well, Ms. Claxton, as long as you're here, can you update us on the aquatic center generally?
We had a meeting today. We are still hoping to get the pool open by the end of May, but like many projects, there's some problems with steel and some of those other things, some problems with labor. So the subs know that their deadline is still the middle of May. We plan to start filling the pool the week of May 7th. So right now, this particular piece, the most important piece of the project is the pool building and being able to have the restrooms and the pool and all of those things we have to have to get our TCO.
Is there, is there an option to open the pool if, if the pool building or maybe the multi-use building are not complete?
Not the pool building. We have to have restrooms and amenities for the people that come to visit, so. But we, we have said to our contractor, that's the priority, concessions is second, event space is third. We are having weekly meetings to kind of stay on top of the project.
Great. Keep the pressure on.
Well do.
Any other questions for Ms. Claxton and the Parks Department? If not, thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That brings us to the discussion portion of the consideration of the plan. Comments from the commissioners? I suspect that, I don't know if Commissioner Coleman wants to elaborate on his thoughts made earlier or let them stand as they are.
Well, it's their deal. I mean, I don't, I don't see a need for it, but if they want to put it up, I mean, it's within the guidelines to put it up. I just don't think it's necessary, but that's, that's more my opinion rather than, than anything.
Other comments?
I think it'll be lovely.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoyt. Appreciate that. I'm sure Chris does as well. Any other thoughts? Commissioner Belzer, anything?
Nope. I'm all good.
If not, is there a motion relative to case number 41-22?
Yes, I will make a motion. I move for approval of case 41-22, Leewood City Park, Leewood Bike Hub, or Bike Walk Hub signage.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoyt. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Belzer. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a roll call vote with respect to the motion to recommend case number 41-22 to the governing body for approval. If you are in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. If you're opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Commissioner McGurran.
Aye.
Commissioner Coleman.
Aye.
Commissioner Block.
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens.
Aye.
Commissioner Belzer.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoyt.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
The ayes have it on a seven to zero vote and case number 41-22 is recommended to the governing body for approval. The commission now calls case number 37-22, Park Place Plate Restaurant, request for approval of a revised final plan located north of 117th Street and east of Noll Avenue. Good evening. Staff wish to make a presentation?
We do.
Please proceed.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, this is case 37-22, Park Place Plate Restaurant, request for approval of a revised final plan. The applicant is requesting the approval of a revised final plan for the following changes. The existing stone, natural stone on the building has been painted to a dark gray. The approved plan shows the existing stone to remain unpainted. A stone-clad knee wall on either side of the main entrance has been removed and replaced with glass. The awning on the west side of the building has been removed. Addition to that, there's some administrative approvals that happened during the process and we're going to add those to this. A sidewalk connection that has been relocated on the south side of the restaurant due to utility easements. And there's been a minor change to some landscaping due to additional city requirements. Staff is not supportive of the changes to the elevations of the building after final approval, including the painting of existing natural stone and the removal of awnings to the west elevation. Staff recommends that the natural stone be restored to its previous condition, either by removing the paint or replacing with unpainted stone. Staff also recommends that the awnings on the west side of the building be replaced. The applicant currently has a sign located on the west facade where the three canopies were located. The sign may be able to be removed to another location on the building, provided that it meets all requirements of the Leewood Development Ordinance and sign criteria for Park Place Development. Staff is recommending denial of case 37-22 and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Coleman.
Let me start out with, let me ask you a question on, on the timeline, because I'm very curious and in all my years on the Planning Commission, I don't recall so many changes coming after a restaurant has opened where the restaurant or building, whatever have you, didn't follow the guidelines that they, that were approved. So if you could give me a step-by-step, and how did we find out about this? Did they come to us? Did our building inspector see it? Give us more, more color on that.
Yeah, I believe Mark Klein might have better details as far as that goes.
Yeah, so essentially you saw the case as far as getting approved for the final. Then they went through and they started making the modifications. We didn't find out about the brick, or I'm sorry, not the brick, the natural stone being painted until the building inspector went out and he was doing his inspections and he made us aware that the, that they had painted the, the natural stone. Then as we were going a little bit further, we also noticed that the awning that was located over on the west side was also removed and there was a sign there. Now, we did actually approve a sign for that location because they submitted something that didn't show the awning and so they had the sign there. We would really like them to put that, that awning back. And then I think that sign is of such a scale, it could probably be used someplace else on, on the building. So that, that's kind of the timeline with regard to, if you're asking with regard to why are they open when, when they had this? Basically came down, they are kind of down to a few final details and stuff like that. And typically we'll allow a TCO, a temporary certificate of occupancy, is what we did. We were trying to work with them, but we made them aware that, you know, we wanted the, the paint removed. They indicated they wanted to keep it. And so really that brings them back before the Planning Commission and governing body.
When, when the inspector brought it to our attention and then we had discussion with the, with the client or with the applicant, does the applicant then come back to us and say, we want to make the changes? Here they are to make it compliant? Or do we go to them and say, you know, how does that whole?
They had actually asked for me to approve it administratively and I, and I wouldn't because I felt that it's something, it's, it's a big change. We typically don't see natural stone painted. And if we would have seen it in the original, we probably, well, at that point, we would have let them know in the initial letter that we sent out that we weren't supportive of the painting of the stones, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Then, may I ask a question too of Mark? So are you saying that when we approved the plan, the awnings weren't on the plan, but they weren't specifically mentioned as being taken off? Is that what happened?
Yeah. And actually, grant included as far as a elevation of the approved plan that was on that particular. And it is located, I think it's the last sheet of the 11 by 17s.
Yeah.
And so you can see as far as the, the natural stone there is not, not painted. It's the, the color that it was originally with California Pizza Kitchen. And then if you look on the west elevation, there are the three awnings that were located there. So those are the elevations that the Planning Commission and the governing body approved. And so that's what we are comparing the, the building against.
Right. And then also I, when I was looking through this, I noticed that, that A1 north elevation, I thought it was interesting that it says existing cultured stone to be painted.
Yeah. And actually, we went back through and when California Pizza Kitchen came in, they originally had cultured stone and I think that that's the reason why you're seeing it on the plans. However, there was a stipulation that that be natural stone.
Right.
And so when we went back through to, to check what was approved and then I talked to the, the building inspector as well and he thought it was natural stone as well.
Okay.
And I, I did talk with a, a stonemason to see if it was possible to remove the paint. Originally I was thinking sandblasting or something like that. He said sandblasting would work, but he said probably soda ash would probably work a little bit better. It's a little bit more gentle to it. So, but he did say that he felt that that was a possibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Block.
So Mark, you had mentioned that it's not typical that, that the city's allowed natural stone to be painted. And so I guess, help me understand what, what your concern is with this case. You know, obviously they, they didn't get it approved ahead of time. They did it, I understand that's an issue, but your concern with this being painted?
I, I think Leewood has always kind of tended toward more natural materials and that, that's the reason, for instance, on stone, we used to allow cultured stone, but then we had so many problems with the cultured stone that would age and deteriorate that we went back to the natural stone, which again was kind of a more natural material that, that was located there. We liked the clay fire brick. Clay fire brick has been painted in a few instances that I can think of, including the North America, or the banquet that was up at Ranchmark. You, you saw that one. However, for the most part, we don't really like the, the painting of the brick or the natural stone, the stucco. We want to be cementuas stucco and not ephes. So again, it just kind of gets back to as far as trying to keep the, the natural materials on there.
And is, do you have a, a maintenance concern with it? You know?
I'm not aware of as far as any maintenance. It could be the flake off. I mean, it's kind of rough and stuff like that, so I imagine it could wear over time. And it is lowered down on the building to where you'd have more probably contact than you would on, if it was up higher on the building. And I imagine you'll have to repaint it if you, the, the paint was there to just kind of keep it looking nice. And then if you had somebody else who wanted to come in, say the plate wanted to move to a larger location or something like that within, you know, Town Center Plaza or Town Center Crossing or something, you know, if somebody new moved in there then, and they wanted the natural stone, then they would have to go through the process of removing it.
And then on the awnings, help me understand better, you know, why, why you want to have those kept?
I, I think the awnings, we just thought it added a little bit more detail to the facade. That's actually kind of the front of the building that faces out onto Ash Street. And so we felt like the awnings were actually kind of a nice feature that was there. There used to be some that was located on the south side that they did get approval for as far as to remove those. Those have been removed. But we thought that, you know, the awnings on the, on the west side looked good and, and that's what, I think that they were thinking the same thing originally when they came through with the final plan because they, they left them there.
Had you talked about, since this is, this case has come about, any other options for something to improve the look of that side if they, if they just don't want the awnings?
You know, as far as the awnings, it's just my understanding that they, they haven't really, we, we have not had a lot of conversations with regard to maybe other features. I, I'm not exactly sure what kind of features that, that you would put there, just from the style of the building.
And then, and just make sure I understand, so the glass wall is fine, that wall that was removed, the sidewalk, I, I, I think those were okay. It's really just the two issues of the paint and the, and the awning?
Yeah, those, those are the big ones. The sidewalk just moved a little bit and it, it's perfectly fine. And then the landscaping was actually adjusted for the fire department comments and things like that. So we're, we're, we're fine with those.
So just the two issues are the reason for the recommendation of denial? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Block. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I have one maybe related to this. I noted the, I guess the applicant has also changed from the May 17 approved plans, the amount of the stucco color, which is labeled type one on the elevations. There was a larger area of this on the south elevation, on the east elevation and around on the southwest corner where the entry is. I guess is, are you aware of those deviations or is that not a concern?
You know, actually, I thought basically the, the amount of stucco had changed or had stayed the same as far as what was there before. The colors, they, they probably changed as far as the colors over there, which was a, yeah, which was a change.
Well, maybe, I guess maybe with the return of the natural stone. Part of that type one color was a warmer gray that maybe complemented the natural stone and, you know, whether, whether that needs to be part of a change coming back as well or a stipulation.
And that might help. I know on the south side, they actually have some cultured stone that was approved with the, the building when they came in. That they left kind of a lighter material. It's almost, it's almost white that goes along there and it adds a little bit of contrast as far as between that and, and the rest of the building. Whereas it used to have the kind of the contrast as far as the natural stone that kind of wrapped around as well because it was kind of a lighter color as well, where now it's kind of more of a even shade that goes along as far as on that north elevation especially.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Mark, a question, does, does the, is the natural stone a design element that is featured throughout Park Place? Is it a design element that ties Park Place together?
I would...
Is this the only building that had the natural stone?
I think there's probably some other buildings that have natural stone, probably not this type of natural stone. I would, I wouldn't say that this is something that, you know, was replicated on a lot of other areas to try and make it more cohesive. I think there are some areas that probably have the natural stone, but maybe different, different styles.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for staff? If not, we'd invite the applicant to step forward. And welcome to the Leewood Planning Commission. If you could come forward and introduce yourselves and give us your business addresses for our record, we would be pleased. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Keller. I'm the general manager of Park Place, representing the ownership of Park Place, KBS. Business address is 11549 Ash Street, Leewood and 66211.
And I'm the owner of Plate Restaurant.
Okay. And... Should also have our architect joining by Zoom, hopefully. And I'm sorry, you said you're the owner. And I'm sorry, you said you're the owner. Could you give us your name, please?
Christian Joseph.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph.
Hi, Mr. Commissioner. This is Jim Warford. I'm the architect with Icon Architecture.
Welcome, Mr. Warford.
I guess I can just kind of start by explaining how we got here. We, obviously, California Pizza Kitchen has a very strong design theme about their buildings. And if you've seen them anywhere other than here, they're all the same. They use a pretty distinct color, a pretty distinct color palette, the pink salmon, orange, and gold. Paint colors of the stucco are really predominant. And this stone that was selected for this property, it too had those same colors, sort of integrated into it, although it's natural, it's still sort of really picked up and played off of those colors. And Christian's restaurant, the Plate Restaurant, is, if you've not ever been there, is Italian Moderno, Italiano Moderno. So it's modern Italian, his look and feel, and menu for that matter also is that. And so we really tried hard to, and it was a challenge, trust me, with this building, because you just can't convert a California Pizza Kitchen into a restaurant of a completely different palette like this. And so we tried really hard, and we thought, okay, in the beginning, we thought, well, let's try our hardest to maintain that, all of that stone that goes around the building, because there was so much of it. And it was, first of all, it's going to be really expensive to replace it or do anything with it. And we got into construction, and we, you know, obviously, just like everybody else, ran into some challenges with getting materials and labor, and there were some decisions that were made to, once we started painting the building, that we started realizing that that stone was really creating a design challenge, aesthetic challenge for us. And so we made a rash decision unwittingly here to paint it, and just really never even thought about the fact that we would need to get this approved. We actually did a test area on the front half on that west elevation, and really liked, I know contrast is a word that keeps getting thrown out there. We liked the sort of textural context that it created, contrast that it created. And so, and then we finished painting out the west elevation and thought, this is beautiful. And we just continued with it. And that was, you know, foolish on our behalf, and probably somebody should realize, oh, gosh, you know, probably to get, get somebody here to help us understand if this needs to go back towards planning commission and that sort of thing. But we were in a hurry to try and get open, all the delays, we're trying to get open, and then realized, had an inspector see it and pointed out to us, and that's when we realized we would have to address this with Grant and Mark and try to come up with a solution. And, but the solution to us was trying to get it accepted, because we really did fall in love with the look and feel of the building. And we really do feel like there is a lot of contrasting elements within just the change from stone to stucco with a cast on seal. There is a lot of like texture that's on that building. It is all the same color, but it is a timeless, modern look. And, and I don't want to, I don't want there to be this sort of opinion of it, that it is something that is just abnormal, when in fact, I think it's, it really has a timeless, classy look and fits perfectly with Christian's menu and what it is he's trying to provide. And Park Place, they encourage this. It says in their Park Place governing documents that they encourage individual building designs to match the product that's being delivered. And this building does that. And I understand there are, there are going to be subjective opinions on look and feel, and maybe some of those go back to whether or not, you know, it's real stone or cultured At the end of the day, we feel like it's a, it was a success, and really like the look. The awnings, I know that has come up as well, the awnings. Somebody mentioned that we could take that sign and put it somewhere else. There is nowhere else to put that sign. And the reason being is that all of our landscaping around the building has matured, and we can't remove that landscaping. That's a part of the agreement and the ordinance here, that we can't remove it. So we would have to remove a lot of landscaping to create a wall area. Really, there's only one wall area, and it would be on that southeast corner for the sign. And I think the idea of, you know, the awnings adding, you know, character to the building, not this building, not this product, not what Christian is providing. Architecturally, I think, keeping more linear, open, and activated interior of space, it has a lot of glass. If you've ever been in his restaurant, it has a lot of glass, it's very open, lighting features that all you can see from the outside. I just think, I think some of these decisions about what we're doing are in conflict with what he's trying to do as a restaurant owner, and provide a classy, timeless restaurant that I think the city of Leewood will be pleased to have in their city.
Scott Keller, again, representing the ownership of Park Place. And one thing I'd like to add, and appreciate staff's time and help working through some of this process, and I think important to note that throughout the process, we made these changes. We included the changes in the construction drawing documents, and, you know, especially on my part, I think Christian's part, in not doing a lot of exterior changes at Park Place, or in my time there in Leewood, we got the construction drawings stamped through the city, and kind of, again, my lack of knowledge, thought we had an approval on that, similar with the sign documents, getting them approved through the city's signage process, assuming that we had had green light on all of that. Now, understanding now in retrospect that we missed a step by not going through the planning commission with changes to the elevations and the exterior, certainly an honest oversight on our side, not an attempt to do an end run around the city planning process. But as Chris, or as Jim pointed out, from Park Place's standpoint, you know, we struggled to get a tenant into that building in a large part because we had a hard time getting prospects around the look of the California Pizza Kitchen, even to the point where the interior space had so much back of house kitchen that it was hard to get somebody to be interested in it, because it took a real huge change. But as he said, we really encourage unique tenants and unique design in our storefronts and our elevations. We're really excited, we're happy about the look, we're excited to have Christian there, and we'd like to leave it with the gray color and the sign in place. So again, appreciate the staff's time and help working through that, not an intentional end run, an honest oversight, and hopefully we can get it approved and move on. But, and I'll let Christian talk about the, the design of his restaurant and how the current color and everything fits in with that.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Mr. Joseph?
Sure, thank you, Scott. If you've been to the restaurant, you've noticed that it's, does have a modern feel to it, and it is part of our branding palette design. We have another restaurant in Brookside that is exactly the same color. We are hoping to expand in other areas, and if we do, we would keep it that same color to keep with our branding. To Scott's point, we didn't intend to do something wrong or go against, you know, what the city planning commission has certainly approved. I was largely left out of that process, I'll be honest with you. My role was, what do you want to see? What do you want? And I provided those colors and what I wanted to see. So I do like the building. I think it adds to that corner. I think I would point out that there is stone on the south side, and I think it's, it lends to that natural look on the south side, and then having the west side being on Ash Street, more of that consistent storefront that you'd see at 801 Chop House or other restaurants in that area where they've designed their storefront to be specific to them. So I would like to see it stay, and obviously, I'm biased about this, but, you know, again, we were not operating under the impression that we were trying to sneak something by. We were, I was shocked about that. And with regards to the awning, we decided to take those down because of the mature trees in front of those. Again, we were still operating under the premise that we were going to remove those awnings. We placed a sign that has significant electrical work, which would be difficult to relocate, would be very cost prohibitive for us at this moment. And if it's, you know, if it has to do with sunlight coming into the building, we have shades that are motorized that take care of that, and we think that putting awnings up would, you know, shelter the view of the restaurant from the public when they pull in. So, you know, I would encourage you to drive by at night, you'll see the signage, and you'll, you'll understand why those awnings just wouldn't, wouldn't work. So, you know, my preference would be to keep it the way it is. Thank you.
And Mr. Joseph, the restaurant's currently open?
We are open. Yep, thank you.
Questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Peterson. I'm sorry, Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Peterson.
Yes, thank you. I guess, I would like to say that I agree with Mr. Joseph regarding the awnings. One of the things I did, I was surprised when I saw the difference between what was approved and what was actually there. But from a personal standpoint, I do believe it, it makes the building stand out more. There's no awnings. The colors and the sign that goes in there really does lend itself to, as Mr., I believe it was Mr. Keller or Mr. Warford indicated earlier, that Park Place would like to encourage different architectural styles and, and in their buildings. I, I do have a little bit of a problem with such changes from the plan that was approved literally one year plus one day ago from today, that there were such changes with, it appears to me as a lack of communication between the applicant and the planning staff. I think a lot of this could have been avoided, but I don't see anything in here that says we should not approve it. So I, I basically would agree with Mr. Joseph and Mr. Keller and Warford on their comments. I appreciate their comments. I really wish they had at least communicated better before we got to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Questions for the applicant before we get to more discussion? Commissioner Coleman.
Mr. Warford, you still on?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you're a licensed architect, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you overs, you've overseen other projects like this where cities have approved plans, and you've overseen their implementation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So why in this case, when, why weren't things adhered to?
You know, I'll be honest with you, I've never done a project in the city of Leewood. I've done a lot of projects all over the country, and I, we make decisions a lot of time that we feel like are minor changes to a building that I really, the awnings was one of those items that I just felt like was a minor enough item. I know, you know, I had read through Park Place's design guidelines, and they spoke about that, you know, the awnings could be in selected locations if an owner, retailer, decided they wanted those. So that decision was a minor change for me. The painting of the stone, I really, it was in haste, and we probably should have considered it. I, you know, really, there's, you can't see a whole lot of it, it's low to the ground. I was thinking there's such a minimal amount of it, once the landscaping grows in, that you wouldn't see much of it anyway. And so there were just decisions like that that were made that were minor changes that I didn't feel like were major enough to, to go back to planning commission on, and that was a mistake on my behalf.
Mr. Warford, this is Mark Elkins. I've got a question, a couple of questions for you. First of all, you talked about fairly eloquently about all of the design elements that, with the current building as it is, tie in with Mr. Joseph's concept with his restaurant. All those, all those elements existed, and all those reasons for doing this existed back in April of 2021 when this plan was approved, didn't they?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I guess-
The one thing we weren't sure, I'm sorry.
It begs the question, it begs the question of, why weren't these design elements included in the application that you presented to us a year and a day ago?
So I think that the stone was one that we were hoping that when we would, once we would get the building painted, that it would actually blend in a little bit better than it did, and it just didn't. It was, it just looked really bad, in all honesty. And so we, we looked at, you know, like I said, we had kind of done a sample painting, paint on the stone on that west elevation, just to see what it would look like, and everybody thought, oh, it's great, okay, well, it's painted, and then, well, here we are, you know, I mean, that was, that was a mistake. We should have, at that point, should have just immediately gotten with Grant, Mark, and said, okay, let's, we need to go through this, through planning commission to get this approved. I think that would have delayed their project even more, but, you know, at that point, I think Christian would have been willing to do it. So in retrospect, that's what we should have done.
But again, all of these, I guess that what you're telling me is that the change in circumstances that warranted this change in design was what it looked like after you painted the, the non-stone part of the building? And that, and that is the change that triggered all of this?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Tell us a little bit about the durability of the paint on the natural stone. I mean, we've, here in Leewood, we've all had experience with, and maybe it's with the application, or maybe it's with the coating product, but having a relatively short lifespan, and now you've got paint flecking and all that sort of stuff, and we're concerned that Mr. Keller and Mr. Joseph, or I'm concerned that Mr. Joseph and Mr. Keller may find themselves in a unfortunately, short period of time, having to repaint again. So tell us about the durability of the product that was applied to the stone.
Yeah, so we, we talked about this with the contractor, too, that it was important we put a primer on the stone first. And a lot of times, if, you know, you'll see cultured stone painted from time to time as well, and it too requires that you actually put a primer on it. And in a lot of cases, the, there is no primer put on the stone, so it's painted, and then sure enough, it starts to whip water and make the paint chip and pop off. So we did require that the contractor, the painting contractor, put a primer on the stone first, and then paint the color over the top of it. So we feel like it's a durable finish, no different than a stucco for practical purposes. So when it's time to paint the stucco, it's going to be time to paint the stone.
And how long, how long from now is that?
Well, for stucco, you know, the recommendation for stucco is that you paint it every five years. So my guess is that we'll be in the same, we'll be painting probably the stucco before the stone.
Thank you, Mr. Warford. I guess a question for staff. I'm curious about, and this, we may not have the right city staff here, but I am curious. It was suggested during the applicant's testimony that these changes were included in the construction drawings, which confuses me a little bit, Mr. Warford, because it sounded like what created the change was when you painted it, and presumably, you had the construction drawings done already at that time, but let's ignore that for the moment. Did, did the city approve the construction drawings with these changes, including the removal of the awnings and the change in the paint? And it just missed in the review process with the folks that review construction drawings?
I believe as far as the approved drawings, when, an approved set gets finalized at the very end, and so it's my understanding that basically, the set that was to be provided as the approved set, not containing any changes and everything, got approved, but there wasn't supposed to be any changes within that set. And it's my understanding it was at the very end, and, and that's kind of what happened.
But I guess, and this is my ignorance of the process after it leaves us, are there construction drawings that are taken to the codes department or someplace for final approval before ground is broken and construction starts? And is there a comparison then between what's presented then and what we approved?
Typically, what happens is when, after it gets approved, then the applicant will then draw us construction drawings, they'll submit those. The planning department does get a copy of those, as well as the fire department, the building department, of course, has them, and Public Works may, may have a copy as well. We do compare as far as what's, what was approved to what they have on the construction drawings. We highlight any changes that we think have been made. We indicate that it needs to match as far as what was approved by the planning commission and governing body. That goes back to the building department, and they act as kind of the point of contact with that. And then they disseminate all those comments from, for instance, building, fire, Public Works. A lot of times, it's an iterative process, so it'll, we'll notice some changes and things like that, we'll send those comments back, they get revised plans, we'll get the revised plans back. Sometimes, well, a lot of times, not all of the comments have been addressed, so the same comments will go back, or maybe if they changed it from different, they didn't exactly change it to what was approved, but they changed what the- approved, but they changed what they had before and now it's different. And so we're doing that. And a lot of times it'll go back and forth for a little while, but then basically it's my understanding from the building department that you, at the very end of the process, after all that review has been done, that the applicant provides them with a set of construction drawings to be stamped. And it's my understanding that that's kind of happened with this one, is that they were changed right at the, at the very end on a set of plans that, that everybody thought had already been reviewed.
So the, just to confirm then, the construction drawings that were submitted to the building department and were ended up stamped, approved, did include these changes?
I, I believe so. I, I would have to double check with, with the building department, but that's my understanding.
Do you have any reason to believe they weren't included in those final design plans? Or construction documents, I'm sorry?
I, I believe as far as from talking to the building department that they were, but again, after it had all been done, all the review had been done, and the final construction drawings were delivered that weren't supposed to contain any changes.
Well, like, like Yogi used to say, it's never over till it's over, so.
So, Commissioner Hoyt, yes. So just to follow up on that, it is your understanding that all of these interim documents that were passed back and forth did not have this series of changes?
That's my understanding. And, and I believe Grant probably is the one who actually reviewed the plans and everything, but that, that's my understanding. It wasn't brought to my attention until, for instance, the building inspector came back and said, hey, the stone's painted. And he must have known that there was a difference as far as what, what was there. So again, I would have to check with the building department.
And one other question, in your experience, which is asked here at the city, what other similar situations have you seen where an applicant basically got to the point where we are today? And what was the response of the city or the Planning Commission?
It's been a number of different responses. I've seen cases where, for instance, I think it was on the Par's building, they had cultured stone and they were required to take off the cultured stone and put on natural stone. I've also seen cases where the, the Planning Commission and governing body looked at the changes and felt like they were all right and didn't like the fact that they were done without the going back through, but, but they ended up getting approved. So I've kind of seen the gambit.
Okay.
Yeah, there was at least one instance at Town Center Crossing where we had the same thing with the outer facade was changed after it was approved. And I know, my recollection was in that case, we required for him to go back to the original plan. Commissioner Block.
And there was a reference similar to the sign or the handling of the sign. So was that approved separate from the final construction drawings? That was a separate?
That was. Basically signage isn't approved with the documents that you had, so that previous approval didn't include any signage. The applicant submitted a sign permit application. We reviewed it against as far as the sign criteria for the development. We probably, we needed to go back and look to see if, you know, the elevations as far as what was there. But I think the assumption was is that what they were showing was, was approved and the sign met the criteria. And so that sign permit did end up getting approved.
And that goes through the planning department or?
And that does. That goes through the planning department.
Thank you.
So, Commissioner Bell. So then that would include the removal of the awnings? If the sign was approved without the awnings, then technically it was approved?
Well, I mean, we approved the sign. We were reviewing it against the signage criteria at that point. We weren't reviewing the elevations of the building, because when you change the elevations of the building, then you typically have to go back to the Planning Commission and City Council. There may be some small things that I'd be able to approve administratively, but nothing that, that big.
Commissioner Hoyt?
Well, just a comment, and I just don't want it to be lost in all of the, you know, what probably from your standpoint sounds like nitpicky comments, but I think I could speak for the Planning Commission. We're very glad to have you in Leewood. And so I think it's extremely unfortunate that, you know, this has come to pass, but it shouldn't sort of cast a pall over the fact that, you know, you're here and I hope you're very successful with your restaurant and, you know, thrilled to have you, so.
Other questions for the applicants? If not, we appreciate your presentation. I guess before we let them go, are there, there are a whole series of stipulations attached to the case that was given to us, including ones relating to the change of the stone and the, and the, and the awnings and the sign and whatnot. Mark, I guess if we were to approve this change, including the, the design element changes, will you be able to help us walk through what we would want to strike from the, from the stipulations?
Sure. Kind of, kind of what you're seeing before you is the stipulations that were approved with the, the original case. And then that number two with the A, B, and C are the changes that were made. And, and basically the way they're written right now is that they would change the, the stone back to where, what it was before. They replace the awnings that were there. And then the other one just refers to as far as some potted plants that I think they realize and they've been working to do that. So if the Planning Commission were to want to, for instance, allow the paint to remain, then they would strike number two, probably two A. And so, so it's written in such a way that the Planning Commission has a little bit more control as far as what they want to do.
So let, let me ask Mr. Warford, Mr. Keller, and Mr. Joseph, and again, keeping in mind what we're going through here, I want to give you an opportunity to tell us if there's any other part of these stipulations that you have any issues with. So the, the two A and B relate to the natural stone and the canopies. Two C talks about all potted landscaping shall be in place per the currently approved landscape plan. Does anybody from the applicant have issues with that requirement?
Not at all. The landscape was planned this morning, according to plan.
And there are 21 other stipulations that were included, and I'm understanding from the city staff that those stipulations were in the original plan. But again, this is your time to tell us if there's anything else that you have problems with. Mr. Warford?
No, they're not.
You kind of fell on your sword on this one, so I'm going to give you a chance to fall on your sword again.
No, that we, we are, we have met all the requirements, all the other stipulations. The pot, the pots, oddly enough, were what was agreed to when California Pizza Kitchen moved in, and they never provided that quantity as far as we know, because they're nowhere to be found out there at Park Place and they're concrete. So somebody either walked off with concrete pots, which is highly unlikely, but we are, we have the model and the brand of those and we're, we're going to replace those. That's, that's on our, that's still on our list to do.
And Mr. Joseph, do you have any other concerns? I mean, I know that you're a restaurateur and not a planner or an architect or, or a builder, but are you aware of anything else that you have concerns with?
No, you know, this is, and this is the third restaurant I've opened and you learn, you learn things on the way every time, so the next one we'll pay a little bit closer attention to some of our submittals. But nothing, nothing that jumps out, just those key items, so appreciate that.
Mr. Keller?
Just, I guess in summary, I think, you know, big picture, again, I want to apologize for the confusion on our part in the process and assure you it wasn't an intentional subversion, but call your attention more importantly to the final product of the building. While we understand there was a process and it wasn't approved, I think very strongly that going back to the natural kind of tan and beige with a gray building on the rest of the building would look very, very strange, not only being cost prohibitive to get it back to that way and doubts on whether we could even get it that way without destroying the stone behind it. But I think ultimately just focus on the, the look and feel of the building now as it is much improved and we think fits really well with both Christian's design concept and his element, but also at Park Place. So I, speaking on behalf of the landlord, we'd much rather see it in its current fashion than back to the, the tan stone with the gray coloring, so.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. That all may be the case, but that was also the case a year and a day ago. And we could have avoided a lot of this struggle had we realized, or had you all realized that the gray and the stone didn't go together at the time you submitted to us a year ago. So, or by you, I mean the collective you. Well, with that, we'll move, we'll move on to discussion and you all may step back. We may have additional questions for you, but I know it's tough to stand there while we're talking about you. So comments, questions? Commissioner Hoyt, I'll let you start.
Well, you know, it, there is a huge process problem involved, but at the same time, you know, there's the real world that we're living in. And it does bother me significantly that these changes were made without any sort of acknowledgement or back and forth with the city. And one thing I would like to see is maybe something that, and it may be the, the shopping center owner, developer, might need to have some additional guidelines put in place so that this doesn't come up again, because this is not a novel situation. You know, there will be new tenants come in who want to retrofit buildings and, you know, presumably that's the business that you're in. And so I would think you would have some sort of internal procedure that would keep this from happening. You know, I think that this location was in need of the right tenant and the right tenant seems to have found the location. I don't have a big aesthetic problem with any of these changes, quite frankly. I just have a process problem that I will try to overcome. But I do think that the expense of moving the signage in particular seems like a financial burden that I'm not sure that in the real world I would want to saddle, you know, somebody trying to open a restaurant with at this moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoyt. Commissioner Block?
I concur with a lot of what Commissioner Hoyt said. You know, first of all, just that the, that the applicant, the restaurateur, you know, chose that location, I think, you know, excited to have this in Leewood. You know, upset that the process wasn't followed, but at the same time, I see that, you know, some approvals were, I guess the thought maybe with the signage and putting it in the plan, it just kind of being slipped in at the last minute, you know? Again, shame on the architect or designer, you know, for doing it that way. You know, regardless of the city, it seems like that, that shouldn't have been done like that. You know, and I, and I do appreciate staff trying to ensure that the building, you know, aesthetically with the, with the natural stone and the canopies and the differentiation and the interest in the building. But, but I think as Commissioner Hoyt said, I, you know, the pictures are a little hard for me. You know, actually, I was there last night and didn't, not at the restaurant, but, but at another restaurant in the complex and, and didn't really even get a chance to look at it closely. I didn't realize, I hadn't reviewed my pack at the time, so I didn't think to look at it. But, you know, at least the photos, you know, and understanding the, the owner's desire to have a consistent look. But as the chairman said, I mean, I, you know, I mean, you know, all those things were known a year ago, so that, that's frustrating, but, but at the same time, I, I think it's, it's, you know, I hate, I hate going backwards like this or doing it this way, but I, but I think that the changes are probably okay.
Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, when looking at this, when we talk about the process, we have an architect, a licensed architect, he should know what's going on. He should know that regardless of whether it's Leewood, Overland Park, wherever the projects are, you have to adhere to the plans and have to adhere to what is passed, both the Planning Commission and to the governing body. There were several instances when it was referred to about they didn't want to delay the opening. I got three teenagers and sometimes they beg for forgiveness rather than ask for permission. And I really got that vibe, maybe because I have three teenagers and my radar is always up about that. But I, I kind of find it hard to believe that when you're going through this process with experienced people running the show, the contractor, the architect, that you're making changes like this, one would have to say, we have to go back to the Plan Commission. So in, in my mind, the process does mean something. And I don't want to set precedent. I don't want to, you know, have something like this occur again, because it doesn't happen that often. I can, I rarely struggle, really struggle to how many times that we've encountered this since I've been on this commission. So with that said, I, the restaurant is a great addition to Leewood. I'm not talking about that whatsoever. It's a plus, but the process should have been adhered to.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner McGurran?
I agree with what Commissioner Coleman said. I, I find it an appalling end run around the process, around the timing, around the approvals. It just seems shocking that anybody that would kind of go through this in, this process in this kind of way. I think the, I, I don't think I would submit a complete denial, but I, I'm torn. You know, I'd be fine with a denial. I'd also be fine with an approval that included the natural stone being restored and a decision being made on a color that matches or complements the stone, because that's what should have happened a year and a half ago. Somebody should have been smart enough to have figured out the, the color schemes that worked. And that's what should have been approved by all of us. So I, I think the process does matter and a signal needs to be sent that it matters. So I would be supportive of complete denial. If others were, I would be supportive of the natural stone being restored to its previous unpainted state with the option of changing the color that's on the stucco so that they feel as though it blends better or matches better. I'm okay with the signage and the canopy removal based on the confusion that had occurred. But it, you know, I, I don't think, in the work that I did, I don't think I, I would ever be the person that would submit something at the last hour and in a sense slip it through because they didn't anticipate any changes whatsoever. And yet there were significant changes that would have required Planning Commission and governing body approval. I think that seems like a complete end run to me. So those are my thoughts and I would hope that, if the city had the ability to assure to the point that was made earlier that this was not going to happen again, or that Mr. Warford, you know, wasn't allowed to participate in the city of Leewood for some period of time, you know, whatever it would be that would cause the, the correct signal to be sent, I would be in favor of that.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurran. Additional comments? Mr. Bellzer?
I actually wrote the same thing in my notes that, that you just said, Commissioner Coleman, about asking for forgiveness versus asking for permission. But, and I too, I'm quite conflicted. I don't like to be in this position. I'm a process person too. I understand the process. I know the process. But as Commissioner Hoyt also said, I don't want to saddle the, I'm thrilled that plate is here too. That spot needs to have a place like plate. I think it's fabulous. I'm thrilled that you're here. But we have a process. And again, I don't want to come back to this spot again. I don't like where we are right now. I don't, I don't feel great about being put into this position, but at the end of the day, for me, I can support the changes that, that have been made, but I don't support the way in which they were made. But I don't want to saddle them with this at this point. It's, it's here, it's done, but I agree that we need to sort of figure out some way to not have ourselves in this position again.
Thank you, Commissioner Bellzer. Well, yes.
I guess I would be repeating what all the commissioners have said about the concerning part of all the after the fact changes. But have, but however, I guess having said that, I don't think restoring the stone will solve the appearance of this building or, or even the, the kind of added on will solve the appearance of this building or even the kind of added-on-token canopies. And have to say that the solution that's now in front of us or now that's been done makes it a much more handsome building. And I think it does represent kind of this international brand that the owner talked about. And so I would be, I guess, in supporting of the changes and have a feeling that if this application would have come this way to begin with, you know, we, I think Commissioner Hoyt mentioned, we'd be approving all of these changes with it. And so it is unfortunate and seems kind of wrong in our process, but I think I would be in favor of or approving the application and with removal of stipulation two A and B.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Peterson.
I would like to agree with Commissioner Stevens on approving this with the removal of two A and B. One other thing that disturbed me when I was first reading through all of this is the fact that why weren't these changes caught before it even came to us tonight? I don't have any problem with the changes. I do believe that had the changes as proposed tonight been submitted a year ago, we would have probably approved it. I have absolutely no problem with the whatsoever with the painting of the stone, nor do I have a problem with the removal of the canopies. That's their brand, their branding of their product, and I have no doubt they will probably be very successful. But it seems to me that there was failures on both parts, by the applicant, but also by the inspectors. If they're changing, if they're applying for a signage, well, if there's already canopies there, obviously they're going to be removed, otherwise they're going to cover up the signage. So there's some other lessons that can be learned, but overall, I would prefer that we approve this with the elimination of stipulations A and B and find solutions to tighten our own process, not just the applicant's. There's more to it. So I would support approving this with the elimination of two A and two B.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Well, I would join the commissioners in the expression of concern and disappointment with the way that the process evolved. I would say, I would go so far as to say that I don't think that Mr. Joseph was well-served by either his landlord or his design professionals here. As Commissioner Coleman said, the design professionals certainly have been involved in planning processes, perhaps not in Leewood, but in other places. And our planning process is not that much different than others. And as I noted when I talked with Mr. Warford, all the elements and circumstances that led to the changes were at least available to be known a year and a day ago when this thing was brought before us. And so it is difficult to contemplate what circumstance it was that suddenly caused a change. And there's still some issues with the process as well, because on one hand, we're told that once the building was done and partially painted is when it was determined that the stone needed to be painted, but yet we're also told that the construction drawings that were finally submitted to the building codes department reflected these. And so there's something that doesn't work quite with the timing there. Frankly though, I would also concur with Commissioner Peterson that, you know, we're only about maybe two-thirds of the process as a development and construction is done, and that is there is the ongoing back and forth with the building and codes department. And indeed, it sounds like some of these changes were reflected in the final drawings and also were reflected in the application for administrative approval of the signs. And certainly, it seems to me that staff probably could have, probably should have picked up on those changes at the time that they went through. Now, in fairness to staff, it's hard for me to accept the idea that the, certainly that the painting of the stone was such a minor thing that didn't need to be brought to staff's attention. So I would have expected that the design professional, when they submitted those construction drawings to the building and codes committee, would have said, oh, by the way, take a look, because here is a change. And at that point in time, before interfering too drastically with Mr. Joseph's opening plans, our staff could have said to the design professional and the landlord, look, this is a substantial change that's got to be taken through the planning process. But on the other hand, that's why we have a requirement that the final construction drawings are submitted and approved, in part, not only to make sure that codes are being followed, but also that the plan approved by not only the planning commission, but the city council have been complied with. And, you know, unfortunately, for Mr. Warford and for Mr. Keller and for Mr. Joseph, you'll still have, however this goes tonight, you'll have an appointment with the city council to deal with here in short order. And I don't know what reception, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, wouldn't attempt to predict how the city council may react to all this. But there is a process that it seems on paper is a good process, but somehow it failed us all here on both sides of the equation, both with the design professional and the landlord. And the landlord, obviously, is an important part of our community and is doing good things at Park Place. And we hope that this, there's a lesson to be learned here and a lesson, a takeaway from how this whole process has gone. But I apologize, I'm up on my soapbox now, and I'll step down. But this is unfortunate, to say the least. With that, are there any other comments by any of the commissioners? If not, is there a motion to be had, how we would like to proceed? Commissioner Block.
I move for approval of Park Place Plate Restaurant. Request for approval of revised final plan located north of 117th Street and east of Knoll Avenue, case 3722, with removal of stipulations two A and B.
Leaving two C, right?
Leaving two C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Belzer. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a roll call vote on the motion to recommend case number 3722 to the governing body for approval with the modifications indicated to, I believe it was stipulation number two. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, indicate by saying nay. Commissioner McGurran.
Nay.
Commissioner Coleman.
Nay.
Commissioner Block.
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens.
Aye.
Commissioner Belzer.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoyt.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
The ayes have it on a five-to-two vote, and case number 37-22 is recommended to the governing body for approval with those modifications to the stipulations. Thank you to Mr. Keller, Mr. Warford, and Mr. Joseph. Mr. Joseph, good luck with your restaurant. And good luck with the city council. I guess I don't want to presume too much. Okay. We now have coming before us, if I'm calculating, if I'm reading this correctly, eight different cases that relate to sewage disposal and septic tanks. Just to give the commission an idea and staff as well an idea of what my thoughts are with this, because these are all amendments to the Leewood Development Ordinance, they all require a public hearing. What my intent is, is to call case number 44-22, which I believe is the amendment to the LDO that contains the substantive provisions that we're trying to, that staff is trying to achieve with respect to connection to public sanitary sewage systems and septic tanks, and to have staff make its presentation with respect to that change, open a public hearing on that case, hear from, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, and proceed to a decision with respect to case number 4422. Assuming that that is approved, I will then plan on calling all six of the remaining cases at the same time. I will not ask staff to make a separate presentation, but will note for the record that we're incorporating the record that was made by staff on case number 4422 with the rest of the cases, and then call for a single public hearing relative to all six of those cases. And if there's anybody from the public who wishes to be heard on any one of the six, we'll consider their comments then and then move on to a vote. And presumably, that vote would be with respect to all six at the same time.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Chairman.
Me too.
Who wants to ask the first question?
We're probably all going to ask the same question. But isn't it case 146-21 that would be the pivotal one and then?
Oh, I'm sorry, I could have checked, marked by the wrong one.
The 45, 44, 45, blah, blah, blah.
So 14621 is the one I kept referring to as 44-22. So if the record could be amended every time I said 4422, it should be 146-21.
We all knew what you meant.
And we'll, we'll, I'll review the minutes closely this next time. Thank you for catching that. Assume that was your comment, Commissioner Coleman, as well. Apologies there. Thank you for catching that. And then we'll move on from there. Does the commission have any objection to moving in that fashion rather than having six or seven individual public hearings where perhaps we'll have a limited amount of public comment on any one of those seven?
Sounds like a great process.
All right, with that, and ignoring the check mark I put on my agenda, I will call case number 146-21, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-4-2.6, Sewage Disposal, Septic Tanks, Request for Approval of an Amendment to the Leewood Development Ordinance pertaining to septic tanks. Mr. Lang, does staff have a presentation? Mr. Klein, please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this is an application for a modification of Leewood Development Ordinance with regard to sewage disposal and septic tanks. We talked a little bit about this at the planning commission work session last time. Really, what is driving this change is kind of a cleanup measure, and then also as far as to make an adjustment so that the city is in compliance with Johnson County Wastewater, who is typically the one who issues the sanitary sewer permits. Currently, right now, the ordinance states that if you have a house or if you have a house and it's on septic, when the sanitary sewer is extended, if it falls within 200 feet within the property lines of that house that's on septic, then they would then need to connect to the sanitary sewer within a period of three years. However, Johnson County Wastewater also has a waiver that they provide. If they look at a case where it's within 200 feet, however, due to topography or some other reason engineering-wise, that it just doesn't make sense to connect to sanitary sewer, then they'll issue a waiver. This particular ordinance amendment takes into that account and includes as far as that waiver as being something that the city would recognize. So with regard to that, that's the primary change that's going on, especially with Section 16-4-2.6 on case 14621. The other ones, as far as case 4422 through 5022, all have to deal with each individual zoning district, because they basically have a statement there that they're required to hook up to sanitary sewer. And so what this does is it takes each one of those and has a Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to reference back to as far as Section 16-4-2.6, which does include the waiver. And so it makes it much more consistent as far as, and it eliminates that, you know, contradiction that's there. And Steph, will you be happy to answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Questions for Mr. Klein. Commissioner McGurran.
Mr. Klein, in your paragraph 16-4-2.6, the last portion of the last line that's colored, where it says unless the property owner, their agent, has acquired a waiver from the wastewater district, would it help the city if added to that sentence was and provided the waiver to the city of Leewood staff? Is it required, in a sense, that you have that waiver on file?
I think it's written, and that's kind of the assumption. I think you could certainly add that. And basically, with that area, as far as if you have an existing building that's located there and they do fall, get a waiver from the Johnson County Wastewater, that would be something where they could provide the waiver to the city, and then it's kind of more of an administrative thing. However, if it was a new construction or something like that, then that would actually have to go to the governing body, so you can see, you know, further up in that paragraph that it does require a governing body at that point.
Your call. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Klein, one question that occurs to me, and I don't know anything about the waiver process for Johnson County Wastewater, but are there, are there waivers ever time-bound? So do they issue waivers that may be good for five years or 10 years or 15 years? Or are they always permanent, if you will, forever type, for lack of a better term, forever-type waivers?
You know, that, I'm really not sure. I guess, I believe the waivers are issued based on engineering and topography. And so unless that topography or that physical condition that would make it impractical as far as connecting the sanitary sewer changed, I think they probably would leave that waiver in place. But whether they have a time limit, for instance, like in a special use permit, where it's revisited after a certain amount of time to see if now maybe conditions have changed of such or technology has changed in such a way that it is possible to connect, that unfortunately, I'd have to check.
Does the, again, this betrays my ignorance of the whole process, but does the Johnson County Wastewater District have authority to require hookups?
I believe that they do have the authority to require hookups. We actually require that they get their permits from Johnson County Wastewater before they're issued their building permits to make sure that that's been done. And I do know it's a fairly extensive review process, or at least it takes quite a while to go through that review process.
Are the waivers, again, to extent of your experience, are the waivers ever a function of the capacity of the sanitary sewer system, the sanitary wastewater system? Or is it more, or is it always the topography and engineering?
I would, I'm not enough as far as an engineer as far as to understand that. I'm not sure if maybe Brian would be able to answer.
Brian, do you have a thought there?
So Brian Scoville, city engineer. I'm not aware of what warrants a waiver and what doesn't with respect to Johnson County's policies.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Knight, I promised I wouldn't ask you.
Well, I'm only going to talk about a waiver I have. This is Marcy Knight in Legal. I have seen one waiver. I'm sure these gentlemen have seen far more. It's from 2021, so relatively recently. It does talk about, it's an application for an exception to Johnson County's requirement, which also requires them to join in if they're less than 200 feet away from a sanitary sewer. In this particular one that I have, it was basically a cost analysis. I think they needed a new septic tank that was estimated to be $7,000 to $8,000 to tie in to the sanitary sewer with $72,000. So based on that cost differential, the county approved it for this particular homeowner. They then did send that to the city, and we had, and this went to building codes, we had 14 days to object, or if we did nothing, then we would acquiesce in their exception. And so that's the one example I have, if that answers some of your questions.
It does. And in that instance, was it time-bound by, in any way?
I am not seeing that on here.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner Hoyt.
Mark, maybe this is just, it is assumed, I'm guessing, but if you look at Section, you know, 14-6-22, you know, 14-6-2.6, the very last underlined line, which was brought up before, it just says has acquired a waiver from the wastewater district. Do you think you should say Johnson County Wastewater District? I mean, that is the only one that would be relevant, but it doesn't say that actually in the guidelines, but it says it in your description numerous times.
Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
And probably capitalized.
To add the words Johnson County before wastewater.
And probably capitalized district as well. Other questions for staff? If not, because this is an amendment to the Leewood Development Ordinance, a public hearing is required, and I would thereby open the public hearing. Is there anyone on the Zoom call or in the waiting room who wishes to be heard on case number 146-21? If not, is there a motion? Commissioner Hoyt?
I move closure of the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Belzer. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the public hearing on case number 146-21 is closed. That takes us to a discussion. Comments or additional questions? If not, is there a motion relative to case number 146-21? Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Coleman, clarification. I don't think it, I think the entity is referred to as Johnson County Wastewater and not District. Just a little semantics there. I don't think I've ever seen District. I don't know if it matters or not.
Well, you have different districts within.
I think as a corporate entity, as a statutory entity, I think there's a District.
I'll defer, but I've never seen it as a...
And we can make the amendment to make it the official name, and that way we can double-check just to make sure.
Okay. So we do want to make that, well, I guess I'll wait for a motion. Commissioner Coleman, you want to make a motion then, since you seem to have a bead on it?
I have a bead on the wastewater. I move approval of case 146-21, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-4-2.6, Sewage Disposal, Septic Tanks, with the exception of adding Johnson County on the last line of the proposed verbiage, where it says waiver from the Johnson County Wastewater District or...
Whatever the official statutory title is for it.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurran. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a roll call vote on the motion to recommend case number 146-21 to the governing body for approval. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye; those opposed, same sign. Commissioner McGurran?
Aye.
Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Block? Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Belzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoyt?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
The ayes have it on a seven-to-zero vote, and case number 146-21 is recommended to the governing body for approval. The commission now calls the following case numbers together. That's case number 44-22, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-2-5.1, AG District; case number 45-22, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-2-5.2, RP-A5 Plan Rural Residential District, five acres per dwelling; case number 46-22, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-2-5.3, R1 Plan Single Family Low Density Residential District, 15,000 square feet per dwelling; case number 47-22, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-2-5.4, RP1 Plan Single Family Residential District, 12,000 square feet per dwelling; case number 48-22, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-2-5.5, RP2 Plan Cluster Detached Residential District, 6,000 square feet per dwelling; case number 49-22, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-2-5.6, RP3 Plan Cluster Attached Residential District, 6,000 square feet per dwelling; and case number 50-22, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-2-5.7, RP4 Plan Apartment House Residential District, 4,000 square feet per dwelling. Mr. Klein, does staff wish to incorporate its comments related and presentation related to case number 146-21 into the record for all seven of these cases?
Mr. Chairman, yes.
Anything to extend or elaborate on your comments?
No.
Thank you. Any questions for the staff with respect to any of these seven? If not, I note that all seven of these cases propose amendments to the Leewood Development Ordinance and therefore require a public hearing. And with that, I'll open the public hearing to comment. Is there anyone on the Zoom call or in the audience this evening that wishes to be heard on any one of these seven cases? If not...
Chairman?
Commissioner Hoyt?
I move for closure of the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurran. All those in favor of closing the public hearing on all seven of these cases, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the public hearing on those seven cases is closed. Moves us to a potential motion. I think we can probably do a single motion for all seven of the cases, if that is the commission's pleasure. Does anyone care to make a motion? Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Block?
I move for approval of all seven cases.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoyt. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a roll call vote on the motion to recommend to the governing body case numbers 44-22, 45-22, 46-22, 47-22, 48-22, 49-22, and 50-22. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye; those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Commissioner McGurran?
Aye.
Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Block?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Belzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoyt?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you. The ayes have it on a seven-to-zero unanimous vote, and those seven cases are recommended to the governing body for approval. I think that concludes the business on our agenda this evening. Do any commissioners have additional matters to come before the commission? Commissioner Coleman?
Mr. Klein, when I was reading through the minutes, you talked about possibly doing a work session in the second Tuesday in May. Are you still anticipating that?
May 10th, yes. Actually, we need to have one. That one should have the CIP and should have an update to self-propelled Leewood. And then we also want to talk to you about as far as what we had talked about a little bit before with regard to density, height, and transects as far as along 135th Street especially.
Will Part II of the comprehensive plan also come up at that time? Or is that already?
You know, honestly, we don't have the numbers that we're looking for quite yet, so that one would not. Originally, we had planned on doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Anything else to come before the commission? If not, we stand adjourned until the work session on May the...
May 10th.
May 10th. Thank you all. Appreciate your anticipation tonight on some, at least minorly controversial issues.
Actually, if I could get the planning commissions...